I would call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was newly duly noticed on May 20th, 2024, through the posting and notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 19.84. Where am I now? 3.1 Pledge of Allegiance from Jefferson Elementary School. Mr. Millard?
Thank you, President Murray. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. David Newman, the Principal of Jefferson Elementary. Dr. Newman is completing his third year at the Janesville School District and his 29th year in education. Prior to coming to Janesville School District, Dr. Newman was an elementary school principal in the School District of Milwaukee for seven years and an elementary principal for 11 years in the Kenosha Unified School District. David received his Master's Degree in Administration Leadership in 1999 and his PhD from Cardinal Stretch University in 2020. Dr. Newman, who do you have with you this evening?
Tonight, I have Jacob Davis and Josiah G. They're brothers at Jefferson. Jacob is in 3rd grade in Mrs. Cordio's room and Josiah is in 2nd grade in Ms. Amok's room. They are both known for their bright smiles and their willingness to help however they can. They work hard at following the Jefferson Way every day. And over the last several years that I've gotten to know them both, I can attest to their kind hearts and their desire to be their best. I can also attest to their excitement to be here tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, is visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to 3.2. Motion to adopt the May 14th, 2024 Board of Education Agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Argy, second by Commissioner Dahmerhausen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That passes 9-0. Safety message.
Thank you. I have a few safety tips for bike safety. I believe May is Bike Safety Month. So here's some tips for you. Ride a bike that fits you. If it's too big, it's harder to control the bike. Ride a bike that works. It really doesn't matter how well you ride. If the brakes don't work, wear equipment to protect you and make you more visible to others, like a bike helmet, bright clothing during the day, reflective gear and white front light, red rear light and reflectors on your bike at night or when visibility is poor. Ride one per seat with both hands on the handlebars unless signaling a turn. Carry all items in a backpack or strap to the back of the bike. Tuck your shoelaces and pant legs in so they don't get caught in your bike chain. And plan your route in advance. If driving as a vehicle on the road, choose right routes with less traffic and slower speeds. Your safest route may be away from traffic altogether in a bike lane or on a bike path. Thank you.
So, one of the things as a driver, you know, and we think about bike safety and thank you Liz, this is perfect. As we particularly where we have bike lanes at and we're parking, if we use our right hand to open the door, it forces you to turn your body to look for if some, a bike is coming or other cars to open the door, then that makes sure the bikers are safer. Thank you.
Citizen comments, 3.4. I have no citizen comments. Anybody wishing to address the board still can, if you'd like to. All right, we'll move on to 3.5. Student presenters from Craig High School. Grace Marata.
Hello, members of the school board. I hope you're all doing well. There are many exciting things happening at Craig this month as we prepare to end the school year. Craig's musical Beauty and the Beast had four showings in the first weekend of May. It was a wonderful show complemented by the orchestra and band players in the pit, which only enhanced the performance. The senior picnic will be next Friday, May 24th, where seniors will spend the morning outside eating and playing games to celebrate the end of the year. The grad walk, where seniors have the choice to visit their elementary school, will also take place on May 24th in the afternoon. Seniors will wear their caps and gowns and be able to revisit where everything started. Senior Scholarship Award Night will take place next Wednesday, May 22nd, where all seniors who are receiving awards or scholarships for their post-high school endeavors will be presented these awards in the large auditorium at 6:30 PM. The last orchestra concert of the year will be Monday, May 20th, at 7:00 PM in the large auditorium, where students will be able to showcase the skills they've been working so hard on this year. The last band concert of the year was May 8th. Students were able to honor the senior players and say farewell to them, as well as thanking Mr. Redler for all he does for the band program. The last choir concert of the year is Wednesday, May 29th at 7:00 PM in the large auditorium. Lastly, Craig's graduation is Thursday, May 30th at 7:00 PM at Monterey Stadium. As today is the last meeting I'll be attending, I would like to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to attend these meetings and speak with you all. It's been a very valuable and enjoyable experience, and I've had an amazing and educational experience within the Janesville School District, and I'll be very sad to say goodbye. Many of the teachers and staff in this district are wonderful people who have shaped me into the person I am today. Thank you, and I hope to see you all again soon.
From Parker High School, Edison Riley Lean.
Hello, everyone. I have my glasses on today, so I'm not squinting. So, to begin, on Monday, May 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, Parker High School will host its 3rd annual student showcase in Parker's East Cafeteria. The student showcase is an opportunity for students with original works to share them with family, friends and community members. This year, over 30 presentations will be shared in areas of study such as technology education, Washington Seminar, DECA, Culinary Arts, FCCLA, the Janesville Research Institute and Forensics. For some students, they have spent all year working on these projects, so we really look forward to seeing you on Monday so that they can share and celebrate their hard work with you. The class of 2025 will be the first graduating class participating in the direct admit Wisconsin Program. Students who participate can be accepted into 10 of the 13 UW schools based on their GPA alone, which is a big step. Students who participate will get a letter in the mail in July stating which schools they have been accepted to automatically. This is a great opportunity for all students in the Janesville School District. The open house for the student advanced construction build will be on May 29th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and the address is 1813 Arbor Ridge Way in Janesville. Parker DECA returned from the International DECA Conference in Anaheim, California. The six students represented Parker High School and the Janesville School District very professionally. I can say so myself because I was there. I regulated everyone, right? So, the DECA International Career Development Conference, also known as ICDC, is the culmination of the DECA year. More than 23,000 high school students, teachers, advisors, business professionals and alumni gather for several days of DECA excitement. Excellent job to Maya Barnes, Julia Jones, Aslan Lustico, Isabel Perry and Charlotte Simmons. Representatives from the Army National Guard visited with the physical education classes recently. Students got to test their strength at the rock climbing wall and their aim at the archery tag stations that the National Guard brought with them. The team also shared information on post-high school opportunities. Now, you guys can imagine my confusion when I came back from school and I was like, why are their kids climbing a rock wall behind the school? Well, I found out that it was the National Guard, and I hope that they had a fun time while doing it. On May 13th, Parker Link Crew welcomed over 300 freshmen at the 2nd Annual Future Viking Day. Link leaders took time to share advice pulled from their personal experiences from being a student at Parker High School and then led the groups through some fun activities as well. Lots of information was shared and much fun was had by all of them. Parker's Student Leadership Council just held their 6th Annual Parker Palooza. The student teams competed in a variety of events, including a volleyball tournament, a scavenger hunt, trivia and many other activities during the overnight lock-in. One of those activities was a lip sync battle that, my biased opinion is that I won, but there's an eyewitness in the back, she might be able to second it, but yeah, I think I won. So, Parker's plant sale has been a huge success this year. Thank you to those who have supported us so far. Plant sales have been amazing. We've raised over $5,000 for Parker's FFA with more sales to come. We have one more advertised day of plant sales, which is going to be May 25th. You can join us and support Parker students from 9:00 to 1:00 PM on Saturday, May 25th, and this will be a clearance sale on the plants we have left, so be ready for a great deal. We also have a donation bin outside near the Parker Greenhouse for used plastic trays, containers and hanging baskets or anything else gardener greenhouse related. We will reuse what we can next year to lower our environmental impact and cost. Follow the Janesville Parker FFA organization on Facebook and you can message them for more information. Finally, the Parker Arts Academy has many events coming up. On May 16th at 7:00 PM, the Parker Arts Academy is having a dance concert. On May 17th, there'll be a hip hop workshop for Parker Arts Academy dance students. And on May 23rd at 6:30 PM, Parker Choral Concert is performing Belonging. Previous events this month included the Acting 1 and 2 showcases and Songs for a New World presented by the Acting 3 classes as a capstone performance. That is all I have to share with you today. I want to thank you guys so much for allowing me to come in since I was a sophomore, since I was 15. I'm 18 now, that's crazy. You know, I'm going to be going to college in the fall, but I'm going to UW Madison, so I won't be far. And this isn't going to be the last time I see you guys, I'll be back. Well, if you want to see me next week, if you miss me that much, I'll be at the showcase. But if you guys, I will be here in August as well to talk to you guys once again. So, I will miss you greatly, but I look forward to hearing all the great things that happens within the school district over the next few years. I promise, the next person to present to you guys from Parker, you'll be in good hands. I won't give it to anyone that I don't trust, so I think you guys will be well taken care of, and I look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you.
Moving on to 4.1. Consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Millard. Anyone?
I'd like to pull 4.9 for the purposes of discussion. I believe that's an important topic for awareness for the community members who may be watching this of the fiscal responsibility that our district is doing.
So, the motion is to approve items except for 4.9 on the consent agenda. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 9-0.
Thank you very much. Just in case, I did prepare a 42 slide deck presentation to cover this agenda item. Actually, there is no slide deck presentation, but included in your packet and for the public consumption as well is a brief memo. It's one page. You may recall, just to unwind a little bit, the district has two debt funds. Fund 38, which is non-referendum approved debt, and Fund 39, which is referendum approved debt. Historically, the district, at least in recent history, has taken advantage of levying in advance and prepaying on Fund 39 debt. Think of Fund 39 debt as a mortgage debt related to our facilities. So going back to Fund 38, which is for the board's consideration this evening, again, non-referendum approved debt, but that nonetheless that we need to maintain. So back in 2019, just prior to my arrival, the board took advantage of refinancing a portion of Fund 38 debt related to the Wisconsin retirement system. So the board was diligent and looking for lower interest rates, just like individuals do with their own home mortgages. So great action by the board back in 2019. We have an opportunity this evening, or the district, the board has an opportunity to take a large portion of that remaining debt and paying that off sooner than later. Right? So again, that's your consideration tonight. We will have one more year of debt, and that's in the 25 calendar year, which will be part of the 24-25 fiscal year budget, but no debt thereafter should the board approve this resolution this evening. When all is said and done, we'll save approximately just over 3/4 of a million dollars in interest payments that the district would have levied had we not prepaid this debt. And again, it's debt. Think of it as your home mortgage, but it's not a home mortgage, it's related to another obligation.
Second.
Motion by Heyworth and second by Herta. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Moving on, 5.9. 5.1. Recognition of Craig and Parker High School Wisconsin Academic Excellent Award Students.
Good evening. Dr. Beyond and I are pleased to be here tonight to present to you the 2024 Wisconsin Academic Scholars at Parker and Craig High Schools. This is a statewide program that's been in existence for about 50 years, and its purpose is to highlight the students at Wisconsin high schools that have the highest GPA and are some of our best and brightest students in our districts. We're fortunate, given our size, that each high school can have three academic scholarship winners. Students who are chosen for this, again, it's based on their GPAs. All of the students you're going to meet this evening have a 4.0. I can tell you that that's something this principal never had, but I do think Dr. Beyond did, so that's, you know, pretty cool. In addition to the 4.0, students also, they consider AP courses, honor courses and ACT scores if we have to do tiebreakers. All of these students have worked extremely hard to earn this recognition, and we're very proud of all the work that they've done. So to introduce our academic scholarship winners at Parker, our first one is Aslan Lustico. Aslan is the daughter of Courtney and Tim Lustico. She's attending UW Lacrosse in the fall and is going to be majoring in Exercise Science. She has participated in volleyball, track and field, Link Crew, DECA. She's been a general manager of the school store, special events manager of the school store, been on our School Leadership Council, Spanish National Honor Society member, Science National Honor Society member and National Honor Society member. When asked what experiences in high school have best prepared her for life after high school, she said, "Being involved in so many extracurriculars has helped me gain additional skills and meet many new people. I now feel very prepared to go into the real world to use the skills I have to become successful. Along with this, I've upheld my academics throughout high school, which brings in key skills. Time management is the most valuable skill that I've learned, and this will help me prepare for my future." It's my pleasure to present Aslan. The next Viking I'd like to present is Eva Schrader. Eva is the daughter of Leanne and Mark Schrader. She is going to be going to the University of Minnesota Twin Cities, majoring in Computer Science. Just a little fun fact, she completed successfully eight AP classes in the time that she's been in high school. In addition to that, she's been on the Palms Team. She's been president of National Honor Society, president of the National Science Honor Society, president of Spanish National Honor Society, been a Link Crew member, Student Leadership Council, a member of the Adventure Club, Women's Empowerment Club and the Computer Club. She said that high school, in high school, taking AP courses and the exams have taught her the important study skills and improved her test-taking abilities, making her better prepared for college and life beyond. It's my pleasure to introduce Eva Schrader. Our last student at Parker is Addie Nelson. She unfortunately is at a softball doubleheader this evening, but we're very proud of her nonetheless. She is the daughter of DeeDee and Matt Nelson and will be attending UW Madison in the fall. She's going to be studying kinesiology with a minor in Spanish. While in high school, she has been a member of the National Honor Society, Math National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, Janesville Research Institute, Student Leadership Council and is senior captain of the girls' softball team. She said that her experiences in high school, especially AP courses, have set up to replicate the college courses and rigorous curriculum and extracurriculars, and this has taught her how to manage her time and help her be successful in her future. So again, I'm very proud of her as well.
All right, I just want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight to recognize some extremely accomplished students who obviously Mr. Lau and I are very proud of. So, I'd like to begin this evening by introducing Kevin Dong. Kevin, come on up. Kevin's parents are Queen Bon and Keith Dong. He intends to study at UW Madison and study computer science. During his time at Craig High School, he's been involved in Robotics Club, Science National Honor Society and Chinese National Honor Society. And when asked how have his experiences at Craig helped get him ready for the next step, he said specifically that Robotics Club has helped me learn how to apply my knowledge about programming to real-life applications. So congratulations, Kevin. Job well done. All right, next, I'd like to introduce Benjamin Ruder. Benjamin is the son of Christie and Jeff. He also intends to study at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and he's been involved in a lot of things at Craig High School, so bear with me here. He has been the Student Council Executive Board Treasurer, Interact Club Vice President, Red Cross Club Treasurer, Chinese Club President, Chinese National Honor Society Vice President, National Honor Society Vice President, Science National Honor Society Member, National Art Honor Society Member. He's been involved in the Future Business Leaders of America and Iran Cross Country. When asked how his experiences have gotten him ready, he said the experience in high school that has best prepared me for life after high school is getting involved in clubs and activities. And obviously, he has demonstrated a high degree of involvement, and not just that, leadership within those clubs. So please join me in offering Ben a round of applause. All right, and last up here, Brendan Wesson. Brendan is the son of Matt and Alyssa Wesson. He too is planning to go to UW Madison, where he'll study finance and mathematics. He has been involved in soccer, track, National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, Chinese National Honor Society, Red Cross, Interact, DECA, FBI La, Chinese Club, Jazz Club, Investment Club, Toki Pona, which I had to Google.
Andrew Ryan's doing it.
Okay. It's a, it's a, an invented language. It's a club. Shorthand, language. International buddies and global scholars. Brendan said that the biggest factor of his college preparedness comes from the balance he had to find between sports, work, studying and social life. As a student who's extremely involved in a variety of extracurricular activities, and I second that, finding the balance between these areas has proven to be an extremely useful lesson that I'm grateful to have learned early in life. Congratulations.
Any of you want jobs now? We're always looking for project managers, so if you do all of that, you can do it.
5.2. Discussion and Restructure Board of Education Committees and Appointments. Everybody saw that memo? Everybody know what committee they're on and what appointments they have?
Yes.
Yeah? All right, we'll move on, pass that one. 5.3. Consider Approval of the 24-25 Board of Education Meeting Schedule. And y'all have seen that memo? We did add meetings in June and July, just to have them in placeholder because of all anticipating discussions going forward. It's much easier to cancel a meeting than it is to add one. So there's placeholders. So anybody have any comments or questions about the schedule? Yes, sir?
Yeah.
It looks like half of our meetings are gone out of there, but we can add them, correctly? Correct? I'm looking at six months of meetings and six months without any meetings. Is that what we have now? Did I get the wrong one?
There's two columns. First meeting, second meeting.
My apology. Let me straighten my eyes out a second here. We'll get back after this.
So y'all, copy of the calendar moving forward, right?
Thank you.
Need a motion for approval of the calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously 9-0. Thank you. 5.4. Update on Long Range Facilities Plan.
Just want to give the board an update of what we're seeing from our survey. As of this morning, we had 1,654 surveys that were counted in the, from our school perceptions. Of those, we had 527 who were identified as non-parents, non-staff, 500 parents and 307 who are staff residents. So there's identifications in each one. That survey will close at the end of the day on Monday. We did another social media boost out and we had a few more folks, so I'm not exactly sure how the mailed ones, if they're done all at once or a few at a time, but we continue to see progress in the number.
to see progress in the number of folks who are doing that. The board meeting on June 11th will provide a presentation to the board for the final data points and what the school perceptions recommendations might be based on the data that we're receiving. And the board would have time at that meeting, or potentially the second board meeting, which is the 25th of June, to take action and give administration direction as to whether or not to move forward with a referendum question. And so what that would look like is the administration would then take that information, create a question, because again, that's the details that we have to do, and then in July, the board would potentially have an opportunity, and Commissioner Murray and President Murray and myself talked about the second meeting in July as an option to potentially vote to move that forward. If the board does move forward, there is a requirement that we have to do it in advance of that, that's plenty in advance, but it gives us an opportunity then to start communicating the details behind it. So we are on track, getting great feedback, and we'll again have that presentation and information for June 11th.
Anybody have any questions? All right, let's move on to number six, Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee Report.
Thank you. We last met on May 6th, though very recently. There were two big items on our agenda. First up, we discussed CISA II's audit of our grade 6 through 12 at-risk programming. And there was a very extensive audit that was done through interviews and a lot of different work. They analyzed our charter offerings, as well as our traditional school offerings at those grade levels. One of the findings was that Rock River Charter School is meeting its mission very strongly. Something else of importance that was brought to light is that in our district, we have a much larger percentage of students attending alternative programming than what we would see across the state. And I think something that is important for us to keep in mind is that we have much more diverse offerings than what many of the districts across the state have. Some have no alternative programs, and so I think we can see that the reason why our numbers are up is that people are successfully engaging in these programs, and we're grateful to have them. We have also seen a huge growth in the district's English language learner population, especially at the high school level, and these particular students are often needing more unique services. Thirty-two percent of that student population in the district is experiencing limited or formal education, limited or no formal education when they arrive in our school district. And so if we're having students maybe in ninth grade who have received very little former schooling, or maybe 11th grade and had lived in a country previously where they didn't have to attend school for the last two years legally, all of a sudden are being required to, we're just, the district's dealing with these challenges and working to meet the needs of these learners as well. And so that, of course, is focusing a shift in some of the programming so that we can meet those needs, and I think that's exciting to hear about. The audit was very extensive, and what we were told is that there are plans to further discuss related topics on, all of, all of that was found in the audit in the coming months, because there's just way too much to dissect in one meeting. So we can look forward to hearing more about the results and also plans going forward with decision-making based on what the audit revealed. So that was just interesting to hear about. I don't know if there's anything that I should add to that that I missed in that overview. Any thoughts on that? Okay. There also was an overview on potential retirement changes, and basically what I mean by that is we are facing in the next school year a potential of 150 eligible employees to be eligible for retirement. That is a great deal of highly skilled educators that would be a significant loss to our district should they all choose to retire at that time. And so we are looking at ways in order to minimize that impact of the loss of these very qualified and wonderful employees. And basically, our employees will still have the opportunity to retire under the same direction that they have and those same benefits, so that's not changing. We're just looking to, looking to find some additional opportunities through the foster and foster consulting firm to develop a mitigation plan, which would be tailored to this group of employees. So while we don't have anything formalized, I think it's important to know that the district is looking ahead, and I has identified this large amount of potential retirees and is working to find a way to mitigate that potential loss and find a way to work with our employees to find out what would be incentive for them. So I don't know if there's anything else to add, but we are, that's very much on our hearts as we're entering the next school year. That was it for our last PPC meeting. We just held our planning session on Monday of this week for our June PPC meeting, which will be, I forget the date of that particular meeting at this moment, June 3rd. So if there's anything that you're wanting to see or talk about, please reach out. Just for future planning, we do not have a PPC meeting or planning session in July because of the holiday and other vacations, so we'll be taking a break in July, but our June planning will be gearing up for August, so think ahead for anything that anyone would like to see. I'm excited that I get to remain on PPC as the chair. I've really enjoyed this work and working with our administrative team, and I'm looking forward to our great PPC committee to continue talking about really important topics for our district. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on, future meeting dates, time, and agenda items. I just wanted you guys to know that we, we maintain a spreadsheet of all agenda requests. And currently, we have three active ones. One is about incentivizing rigorous courses and weighting grading for honors AP and capstone classes that was submitted by Commissioner Myers. Currently, that's being discussed with principals. Another one was submitted by Carl Dahmerhausen, directly relating to having Narcan in the We have an agenda-setting meeting on Monday. I'd like to have a discussion with the superintendent about putting that on the board and getting the board's consensus on moving forward on that or not. And then finally, Commissioner Hayworth submitted a gender request concerning communications in general between staff and our students, and we're going to sign that to the Policy Committee for review of current policy, anything to do relating to staff-student relationships that's directly rights to communicating. There's no new agenda request at this time. If you want an agenda request item, there's a form that you can fill out with a who, what, when, where, and how, and why, and then that'll get added to the spreadsheet and see how that goes. How about future meetings?
Future meeting dates and times. The Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee will meet on Tuesday, May 21st at 3:00 p.m. here at the Educational Services Center. The Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee will meet on Monday, June 3rd at 4:30 p.m. at the Educational Services Center. The Board of Education will meet on Tuesday, June 11th at 6:00 p.m. at the Educational Services Center, and again on Tuesday, June 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the Educational Services Center.
Anyone? We're adjourned.